Good evening, everyone. I see we have all of our board members present, so we'll get right into it. So I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And I'll get right to the right to know script. So tonight, we'll be conducting a school board meeting of the South African School Board. Before we get started, we do the checklist and to ensure that the meeting that we are holding is in compliance with the Right to Know Law. As Chairperson of the South African School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. In accordance with the Emergency Order and confirming that we're providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously watch and/or listen to the meeting on Zoom and via phone by following the directions and links provided on our website, www.sau39.org. We have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email awallace@sau39.org. In the event the public is unable to access, the meeting will be adjourned and will be rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. And finally, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where they are. And if anyone is in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the Right to Know Law. So we'll call the roll. And I'll start with Steve Coughlin.
Steve Coughlin, present, home and alone in the room.
Thank you, Mr. Facy.
Amy Facy, present and home and alone.
Mr. Glover.
I'm John Glover. I am at home and also alone.
Ms. Grant.
I am home and I am alone.
Ms. Taylor.
I am home and alone.
And Mr. Torres.
I am home currently alone, but I will call, you may see a four-year-old come whizin' by, so I'm currently alone.
And I also am home and alone in the office. Thank you all. So we'll actually start our meeting right with public input. Number one of two public input, so for any of the public that would like to address the board, please do so by using the raise your hand feature. And I'll call on you as I see folks that would like to address us. So we'll give you a little bit of time to put up your hand. I know it's difficult to kind of entertain discussion before we've had discussion. But just in case somebody has something on their mind, feel free to speak up. Seeing that we don't have any currently, there will be a second public input once we've all looked at and motioned and passed the consent agenda, so we will get back to that at that point. So moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Amy. Any discussion? Okay, there we go. The virtual hands are going up just as we intend to. Good. So I saw Laura's first, so Laura, go ahead. Do you have anything you'd like to pull first?
I wanted to pull the minutes.
The February 15th minutes?
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
Number three, the UFB.
The UFB, okay, projected UFB, okay.
Number six, the start time memo. Number seven, the resignation letter. And number eight, the principal's report.
Okay, I'll get right to those in a moment. John, you have, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
My two were number two and number six.
Okay, so right now we have one, two, three, six, seven, eight. Is that correct? I believe so. All right, oh, since we probably have some good discussions. Stephanie, you had your hand up earlier, but you brought it down and you were all set for the moment?
Yeah, I just wanted three, six, and eight, so we already mentioned.
Okay, great. All right. So let's go ahead and start with Laura. Yeah, and what would you like to address or change on number one, the minutes?
The minutes, something small, line 424, when it said Ms. Taylor would like to see the current unweighted GPA distribution for current sophomores and current juniors. This will be valuable in assessing the new grading system. And GPA was not included.
Okay, so you'd like to ask Danae to insert the initials GPA?
Unweighted GPA distribution.
Okay.
And I have not received that item. I requested it over a month ago.
Okay. Adam, is that something that somebody from your office can provide, or where does that come from?
Which item specifically, Mr. Chairman?
The unweighted GPA. Can you elaborate, Laura?
The current unweighted GPA distribution for current sophomores and the current unweighted GPA distribution for current juniors.
What do you mean by distribution? You'd like to know the names of each student and their GPA?
No. There's a distribution that's published every year currently by the administration, by the school. It's standard. They'll know what I want when you ask the guidance department because they produce these each year.
Okay, well, as soon as it's produced by the guidance department, we'll provide it to you as well.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Anything else under number one by anybody? No, okay, John, you have your hand up for a different reason?
Oh, no, no, that's just a phantom hand.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Appreciate it.
Yep, no problem. Laura, you had a concern also with, actually, why don't we just do a minute order, be easy and jumping back and forth? So number two, John, you had a concern with the unanticipated revenue?
Yeah, well, just that the requested board action, is it? I don't remember it being customary that we would make a separate motion to accept unanticipated revenue. And if it is a motion, then I would recommend that we make motions separate from the consent agenda so that they're distinct in the record. And that this motion is actually made and seconded and voted on independent of the consent agenda.
Okay, well, I think, and yes, Adam, go ahead. I was gonna call him.
Thanks. Yeah, Mr. Glover, we do have motions for unanticipated revenue. This is our natural order of things. And consent agendas do include motions that are wrapped up in that one motion. The theory being that the consent agenda or items typically don't require much discussion by the board. And all of those motions are then assumed to be part of the minutes moving forward. So if a board member wants to vote on something separately, for example, school start times, just as an example, then that could be, you could make the request of the chair to vote on that one item separately to have a recorded vote, but otherwise all of those motions will be assumed to have passed if they're included in the consent agenda motion itself.
Okay, fair enough. Well, then, this $700 from Health Trust, is that something we were owed? Or is that something that is being gifted? So should I thank them for keeping good books or for having good graces?
So first, in full disclosure, I need to disclose, I'm a member of the Board of Directors for Health Trust. It will not affect my duty of care or loyalty to this SAU and Sansor, but those funds were given to us as part of a wellness initiative that our school district earned is by having a wellness coordinator and participating in the wellness program. So it's funds that then So it's funds that then get to be used for enriching staff wellness as a result.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Superintendent Steele, we'll go on to number three. Laura, you had a question or concern about the projected UFB?
I was looking for just a brief explanation and plans that the superintendent was going to propose or what he might see as proposing.
For utilizing the UFB?
Whatever action.
Okay. I'm not, okay, so I would like to say that I don't believe that we are at a point where we start discussing what we want to utilize, any leftover or unanticipated funds from, that are left in that fund balance. This is just the, we ask for a monthly check in or bi-monthly check in of what the current status of the UFB is. So should we have ideas of what we want to use that for? The only thing that I know that we are trying to plan on using it for is eighty thousand dollars if, or I can't remember the amount, so I apologize, but some eighty, eighty-five, something like that, thousand dollars, if it's available at the end of the year to put towards the turf replacement fund. So that's the only thing that, that we've talked about as a board at this point.
We had talked about if the budget doesn't pass the security upgrades to the front entrance. That was an item too, and I'm just, I'm trying to read through this. The two hundred and thirty in revenue, that goes back to taxpayers?
Yes.
And then the five seventy, if we choose as a board to do anything with it, that's what's available, is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay, those are the questions I had. Thank you.
Okay, welcome. Stephanie, do you have an additional question on that category?
I, I do. Can I guess, so there's a separate COVID funding box that goes through CARES and the different funding. Can someone just explain that money? So are we going to use all that money? If we don't, does that go back to the taxpayer, back to the state? Do we keep it? How's it work?
Yeah, so we, we are going to use all of that money. And that's our goal because it's been gifted to us. If we don't use it, it returns to the state and then to the feds.
Okay, and that's not in the five hundred and seventy thousand, I'm assuming?
It's separate, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Michelle, did you want to expand?
Yeah, if I could, I just wanted to mention that with the CARES and the two supplemental public school resource fund, the, actually one supplemental public school resource fund category, that those funds have already been expended. So they've, they've already been committed and used. In next month's report, there'll be an additional line for CARES is considered S R one funds. There's another round of S R two funds and that'll be listed on there too.
Michelle, didn't play a part of getting the America Rescue Plan passed as well that will provide additional funding for us? There will be quite a significant amount coming our way as well, but we don't know the amount or the regulations or the process. We know some generic details about it, but that'll be future funding to discuss as well.
Great, thank you. Relevant to Laura's question about providing money for the security entrance, should the budget not be passed? But so that's going to be something that we're gonna squeak out in June because we'll have just have learned whether or not our budget is passed and we'll just have a very short period of time to be able to say, yes, we're going to utilize X number of dollars, whatever that that sum was, I can't remember, two hundred and fifty thousand or so out of that UFB. So we could said, if we look at additional projects, we could kind of set two hundred and fifty or whatever the right number is aside. But then, you know, which could then go back to the taxpayer if the, the budget passes. But we can also just wait until June and, and cross that bridge at that point. Okay, George, you have something on this topic as well?
Yeah, just a quick question for my addification. So that COVID funding is we already have in hand, or are we making reimbursement requests to the state for COVID related expenses?
Happy to respond to that if you would like.
Please do.
Those are funds that have already been dispersed to the district and there are certain criteria that have to be met to draw those funds down, even though we've received payment in full, we do need to keep appropriate records to show that the expenditures charged against those dollars were eligible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so it takes care of those three, first three. Sorry, Roger, nobody has any questions for you on the facility report. I think it was pretty comprehensive, so I think you're off the hook for the moment. We'll go right to the start time, school start time memo. And whoever had a, I think Laura raised a question with that, and Stephanie perhaps? We'll start for Laura.
We can start with Stephanie.
Okay. Stephanie?
Okay. So since we talked in February, one of my concerns, and it's still a concern, is club time. And only really having twenty minutes or so really realistically available before the kids head off to sports practice. So for me, it's more than them trying to get on a bus. They really don't have time between school and sports practice to participate in clubs. So the question I have is, because I'm thinking, some of the significant ones I think about are jazz band, math team, theater club. Have we done anything to think about, since we've had a month since February, about how we're going to approach this?
We've had some time. Mike, if, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot, I'd like you to address that if you could.
Yeah, we've had some conversation about trying to, you know, continue on with the common practices of, of using time after school and coordinating around the kids who are involved in it, like they've typically done. Like, and as I kind of learned about it was, they did practices in late afternoon or early evening, and that's stereotypically how it's been done. But we've also had some conversations about trying to capitalize on some of the extra time during the day around advisory, around some of the available periods to, to use clubs as needed. It is going to be kind of like a case by case, you know, club by club type, type approach. But we haven't got too, too deep into it, other than me inquiring with people like Delaney and, and community council representatives on what would work, you know, what would work for the kids, you know, during the school day and then after. And so, but it is something we're trying to address.
Okay, yeah, my concern would be as if it's during the school day, if kids are, if it's a free period and kids don't have a free period, want to be in a club, then they can't be in that club. So, yeah, it's, it's gonna be difficult, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
I was wondering what the plans for dismissal looked like and what the plans for jazz band looks like.
That those, the jazz band has kind of referenced a little bit in conversation with answering Stephanie's question. But the dismissal, we're gonna have to look at dismissing a little bit differently. And in fact, I've had a, a number of conversations with advisory, current seniors and other staff about, we're gonna have to potentially do it differently. And that's gonna be a shift in kind of the logistics after school and getting bussed in. You know, might not be something that, that's a reality and likely not. But how we do that, that's gonna be in cooperation with, you know, the school resource officer, Roger, and, and other people to, to make sure we have a good plan to get on and, you know, on campus and off campus and other administrators like after school. So. But the kids will have some input in that. You know, in fact, you know, Delaney and I talked like that could be a proposal to community council about how that looks like.
Okay. So students will have the opportunity to exit, like, right now they're held until the buses go.
Yeah, right now, the, the, the common practice is to, when school ends, they hold them after there. But next year, you know, that's not gonna be a reality with the way we, when we end school and then when the buses are gonna leave. And we're gonna have to sort through that. And there's no way we're gonna make kids wait there for a half an hour, Laura. People think that, that just that's, that's not gonna be the case.
Okay, thank you.
Amy.
Thanks, Pam. Yeah, Mike, thanks for bringing some more information on taking a relook at the clubs. So just a suggestion, in addition to talking to the community council and student reps, I would definitely make time to meet with the individual club advisors. Because I know like for math team, and you might already be doing this, but for math team, I know just as an example, they always, they meet for practice, but then they also take a variety of tests during the, the school year where those are actually, you know, they, they often get pulled out of their class to, to do that. So I think taking a relook and talking to the advisors and the students that are involved in those clubs, they might be able to come up with some creative solutions to, to try to make each individual club that has unique requirements work.
Good suggestions, Amy.
Thank you.
Laura, one last.
Number six, start time should be pulled out and voted on individually.
Okay, we can do that. Alright, moving on to number seven, the resignation letter. Laura, did you have a concern about that?
I think we should discuss a non-public, but I didn't want it in the consent agenda if I wanted to ask questions about it.
Adam, is that what we should do relative to that letter?
Absolutely. If there's concerns about a resignation letter, we can discuss them on public later. No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll do that. I don't know if anybody else had any concerns on that one, but it sounds like we'll discuss it later anyway. And then lastly, their principals report. Stephanie?
Yeah, I had, I had two questions. One of them regards the, the comment in there about the reframing the 10th grade experience and about the routine current team structure. Can you explain that a little bit more, Mike?
Yes, so we are beginning in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year going to be looking at kind of creating a little more flexibility within the 10th grade experience and running that a little bit differently than has been done in, in previous years. So we won't have the, the same structure that we've had at the 10th grade level. We're gonna have a little more flexibility for both students and teachers. We're gonna talk a little bit about, you know, working on the personal pathways to graduation. So we can, so kids can use South Hegan a little bit more liberally than they have in, 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 in previous years. And so we went through a process similar to the, 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 the daily schedule process, not as extensive, but internally with with the staff and, and kind of came up with the decision to, after a series of conversations, to go in a different direction. So we're gonna be scheduling the 10th graders a little bit differently. They're not gonna be on the teams and the teachers will be scheduled a little bit differently as well.
So is it more like, let's say, the eleventh and twelfth grade where they get to pick the classes and it falls in, or is there something more to it than even that?
Similar to eleventh and twelfth grade in a lot of ways, but then coming back from this school year, the twenty, twenty-one school year, we are going to structure sophomores and ninth graders, you know, free periods a little bit differently. And, you know, because we added that eighth period and we want to have some access to sophomores from our teachers and our counselors during the school day. So if they choose not to take an eighth class, which we hope many of them don't, we have a structured environment to put them in. So we can make sure that we are addressing any academic gaps or, or social emotional gaps or mental health gaps, you know, or needs of our students and make sure the teachers are available. So that's gonna be a little bit differently, but the scheduling is gonna be similar to eleventh and twelve.
Okay, yeah, I, I have to say I'm a, I'm a fan of that because it'll allow those 10th graders to be a little more flexible in choosing options, I think. So that sounds great.
That makes me smile, Stephanie.
Also, a question about homeschoolers. So we have a few homeschool kids. If they come back next year, like, I don't know if they're typically homeschool kids because I don't know who they are. But if they just were homeschooled for this year because of COVID and didn't want to do the hybrid schedule sort of work. If, are there plans to, I don't want to say test them, or how do we know where they are, where they fall? Are they ahead from where we expect them to be or behind? What's the plan to assess?
Yeah, so we, this actually happens even in a typical year. We have folks that come back and forth from homeschooling. And we assess students just like we do any student that moves from another town, another state or another country. And we, part of the onboarding process and guidance is to do some work to figure out where kids are. And it's not uncommon that after we place kids, we adjust after a little while and we find out really, really where they are. So we're careful not to in any way be discouraging to folks that are homeschooling because we support our homeschool families. And so we don't do things that could be seen as entrance exams to get back into the school. But we do, we do work on a case by case basis to find the right place for kids.
Okay, yeah, because I was thinking you could have a kid who's supposed to be coming in and ninth grade or 10th grade math and they really excel because they were homeschooling this year. So how do we know? How do we prove? How do we? So I would just make sure we have a plan. Okay, thank you.
It's a careful process.
Thanks.
Laura?
Well, I wanted to say it was nice to see that we have less remote teachers. And I wanted to applaud the teachers and faculty at the high school for all their hybrid instruction that they've done this year. It's been a big success from my understanding and our personal experience. I wanted to address the inquiry based learning and what efforts have been made to receive feedback from the students about inquiry? I mean, I know you're, we already had a lot of it in the curriculum at Sohigan to begin with, and now you're expanding on it. I just wanted to know what feedback you've solicited from students.
At this point, we're not at that level. Oh, Adam, I just jumped in on that. You want me to answer that? My bad. So at this point, we haven't got down to the student level, but we've had a, a series of conversations about our vision of learning at the high school as it, you know, connects to SAU thirty-nine, especially AMS. And so, so right now, the adults at the high school, as we talk about what learning looks like and what we need to inquiry as part of that conversation. If you think about South Hegan, it's a little complicated, and I know you guys, a number of you have a long history with the school. But if you start thinking about some of the guiding documents and, and, you know, from the Mastery Learning Handbook, to the mission, to the vision, to the South Hegan Six, to the Constitution, to the Principles, to the Portrait of a Graduate, to the definition of Mastery Learning. It is, there's a lot happening. And what we're trying to do is kind of make that into something that we can succinctly communicate to our students and our families. And so before we put eyes on it from the student level, we gotta sort through that with our, our staff and students, but also connected to the work by, you know, Christine Landwehr and the other, other buildings in the district. So we'll get there, but it's just kind of something that, it would go through a process.
Okay, John?
Yeah, Mike, this is for you, I think. On your point number two about the reframing of 10th grade, your Romanet Five heterogeneous groupings is to be something that will still be included. I think that's warrant, I mean, that's totally fine. My, my question is, does the flexibility? Have you asked the question whether the increased flexibility is a good opportunity to experiment with some homogen- um opportunity to experiment with um some homogeneous groupings when warranted? So that um students who are excelling in some area or maybe need extra help in area can gather for periods of time and um get what they need at together. And then leave that space to come back to a more heterogeneous grouping like, say, an advisory or some other course. Uh and then and then move in and out of the heterogeneity or the homogeneity of their groupings.
Yeah, you know, that's part of the conversation at South Sahigan, you know, a a major kind of foundation of of Sahigan is 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 the way they group students, particularly, you know, when the humanities course isn't at the ninth and 10th grade level. You know, but you know, tracking, you know, or grouping kids in a certain way, you just got to be careful that it's in the best interest of of the students. And a lot of the grouping of students can be done through how we differentiate in the classrooms. And in what kind of instruction, you know, it takes place and how we ask kids to interact with the content or each other or the teacher or people outside the building. Uh but I can tell you, John, that that's part of another presentation that, you know, I'll I'll get Adam and Pim to have us put on the agenda about what does that look like, you know, this personal pathway to graduation and some of the flexibility that we created for students? And then some options and some predicted kind of, you know, pathways that kids will take. And and we do have a lot of that, John, with like the Singleton Courses, you know, with the electives and the AP courses and some of the Running Star Courses. Uh and so I I I think where it's appropriate will be there. But there's part of a, you know, it's currently connected to the vision of learning that we were talking about. Like, what do we want the experience to be like for for our students? And what do we want them to have access to and take advantage of? And so I I do see some of that stuff that you were describing happening. Just don't know exactly where it fits in, you know, until we build a master schedule and we create some of those options for kids. And and what what they can take advantage of as they select their courses and go through it. So I'm not I'm not sure if that answers your question, but that's kind of where we're at.
I'm I'm happy to hear it's on your radar and I appreciate your response. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Um Laura, you have another question on this topic?
I have a few more questions, but
Okay.
To bounce off of John's question, the ELOs, are they integrated or distinguished from the senior projects? I I hear you use ELOs this year. The senior project is optional. I'm just trying to see where you're where you're going.
Yeah, there there's, when you were talking about extended learning opportunities, there's different ways to define extended learning opportunities according to the State Department of Education. And each community has the opportunity to to kind of define it the way they want. And, you know, in a pre in a previous life at White Mountains, we had six different kind of things that could be considered ELOs, right? Like six different kind of ways you could go. So it could include senior project, but I'm not saying it has to, you know? And it could be a little bit more of a robust senior project, but it also could be isolated. It could be an experience, you know, uh, you know, like we could have someone who works with Michelle in 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 the uh the BA office and and that could account as an ELO. We could put someone, you know, in an experience at the elementary school or or a different organization. So there's different pathways and options as you create ELOs. And there's what Sahigan has to do is they have a good foundation of it and they have some some bare bones. It's just not as sophisticated as as other places and some there's some work to do on that. But I think it's connected to the personal pathway piece too. And right now, we're still, for me, we're setting up the systems and structure to be able to do that, Laura. You know, so we can do define it better.
More more specifically, are you phasing out the senior project to make room for ELOs?
No.
Expansion.
No, not at this time.
Okay.
And and I don't foresee the senior project being optional after this year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so.
Do I have other questions?
Okay, uh well, we still have some other things that decide we got to pull out the and I'm I'm sure there's going to be some lengthy discussion and some of the the school start times and possibly with the resignation letter. So I just want to be cognizant of that. Uh do you have like one more big good big question that you want to ask it and uh go from there?
Uh it's one major topic. Um it's something that's been uh addressed a couple of times in meetings, the National Student Clearinghouse. My questions specifically are, um is the SAU sending social security numbers of our graduates to the National Student Clearinghouse an outside third party?
No.
Okay, what report are we receiving? What information are we receiving from the National Clearinghouse and how are we doing that?
Uh we subscribe to a service that the National Clearinghouse provides. Um they gather the information on our graduates. We provide them demographic information that we have on file, including their name, date of birth, et cetera. They match that with data they have from uh nearly all the universities in our country. And let us know the progress of our graduates in completing degrees.
Is this in the principal's report somewhere that I and I missed it? There is there a reference to the National Clearinghouse within the principal's report?
I believe so. And it was last month, too. Because it was never addressed last month.
Okay.
I just I would like copies of the reports that we've received from the National Student Clearinghouse.
Uh we make public uh reports. Um we have last, we've only been subscribing to it for, I believe, two years now. So last year during deliberative sessions, we we published um several graphs that displayed our data, how we compare to other places. Um but a lot of the information that we receive from them is confidential. So uh we're happy to provide what we uh are publishing and make public, but we're not going to provide uh information that's not public.
Okay, well, when I looked at their website, it said that the reports they returned to school districts did not include confidential information. But um yes, I would like a copy of the information that's not confidential for those reports. I'd like to see what data we're collecting and how this data is being used is where I'm going at. And how does it make the school better?
Yeah, when is that typically available, Adam? The reports?
Uh I actually don't remember when we run those reports and when we get updated information from them. Um but um I'll find out and get back to the board.
Great, that'd be great. Thank you.
And just to be clear, we are not the ones collecting any data. The National Student Clearinghouse collects the data. Uh and they simply provide us with information that they have collected about students that have already graduated from our schools. So we are not collecting any information.
Right, but you're sending unique identifying information about our graduates to the National Student Clearinghouse. That's how they identify that there there are students.
Indeed.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to pull uh number six, which is the school start time. We'll vote on that separately. We'll pull that out of the consent agenda and we'll also pull the resignation letter out of the consent agenda. So um having gone through that, do I have a motion to amend consent agenda?
Um move that we adopt the consent agenda with items number six and seven pulled and with the amended minutes of February 15th.
Great, thank you, Steve.
Second the amendment or motion.
Second from John Glover. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Um Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
ACS.
John?
Glover, yes.
Stephanie?
Rand, yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
George?
Laura is yes.
And Gronster, yes, so that amended consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll go on to those in a moment, but I will would be remiss if I did not give um Ms. Fox an opportunity to talk about anything from the community council that she wished to bring up. So um let's take a moment and allow Delaney her time on the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. So two weeks ago at our meeting, the protection proposal that I spoke about a few meetings ago was passed unanimously by council. So that proposal is to remove the current Sahigan policies, GBGAB and JLCD, A, which don't allow for the distribution of condoms and other birth control devices. So um I'm just mentioning this now and Ralph should bring it to one of the future board meetings to add it into the consent agenda. And then I also just wanted, like Mike and I also just wanted to give an update on senior class activities and stuff like that because so many things have been affected by COVID. So last week, we had a senior class meeting that was run by the our senior class advisors and the administration. So Fink Fest is happening. Um it'll be the week before April. And if everything possible will be held outside, assuming the weather's good. And then the administration and the Student Activities Committee have been working very hard to make it inclusive for all students, both in person and online. Um while also being COVID safe. Then the usual senior events that are almost a rite of passage at this point are being pushed back as far as possible in order to try to make them as normal as possible or as similar that um they have been in the past years. So at the meeting, there was also a survey given to all seniors and almost three quarters of us responded to it. And it was asking us questions about like Challenge Day, Prom, the Senior Hike Class Trip and Project Graduation. So a few stats from that survey is, so if you don't know what Challenge Day is, it was supposed to be on the day that we had our Wind Day. So obviously, we weren't in school to do that. And um that is just a program that gives students a platform for the senior class to be on Zoom and kind of bond with each other and talk about the different ways that we've been affected by Corona and a few other things like that. So from the survey, the responses were about 5050 either in favor or against that. So no decision has been made on whether that program will be ran, but it's an option at this point. Eighty percent of seniors said they were willing or wanting to attend prom. 14% were unsure and the rest were not willing to do that or not interested in doing that. Then the Senior Hike was very much, everyone was very much in favor of doing that. So that'll most likely happen this spring. And then a class trip, nothing is finalized on what the class trip would actually be. Um we had the opportunity to like give our own ideas that were COVID friendly. But 76% were in favor of the trip, 17 were unsure and the rest were not in favor. But um senior leadership, we talked about it today at our meeting and brainstormed different ideas and used the results from the survey to try to find different ways that as a class, we could like have some fun and do something a little bit outside of the school. And so this fall, we didn't collect senior dues. So that would be an added expense to the senior class that we'd have to take care of. Um and it will also entail more planning and coordination. So no ideas are set in stone yet. And then for Project Graduation, which I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, but it's just to happen after graduation, like get all the kids together again. So some ideas that were brought up were a bonfire with food trucks at the school or a possibility of renting out the Milford Drive-In, watching a drive-in movie. And then also having a drive-in in the school parking lot. But other than that, I am all set.
Great, thank you for the update. Uh it sounds like you got some uh really good progresses, well, not progress, but um indications of whether or not seniors want to keep their activities, I think, which is a great thing. So hopefully, uh things will normalize enough to be able to hold those. So uh I know that 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 was a challenge to do those things last year and hopefully this year will be a little bit easier. So thank you for your updates. All right, um so now um we are, let's, I'm going to push off the second public input until after our school start times discussion. So let's have that discussion now. Um we'll have the public input, then we'll go into non-public and discuss the resignation letter and anything else discussed. Does that sound good at everybody? Seeing no complaints. All right, great. I saw a couple of thumbs and that's good enough for me. Uh all right, so um school start times. Anybody have questions or comments that they'd like to bring up at this point on that? Laura?
I I noticed that I wanted to know how changing the school start time tied into the strategic vision.
Is that a question that either Mike or Adam might be able to answer?
I'm happy to. So uh it's not directly tied to anything in the strategic vision, just like a lot of the things we do in a school that are operational are not directly tied to a strategic to the strategic vision. Um however, uh this is actually a topic that has predated uh me uh and anything that we did in developing the current strategic vision, as this has been something that's been talked about for many, many years. So um in the in the same way that we have, we strive to have uh safe indoor air quality in our schools. Uh in the same way that we strive to have uh fire drills and in the same way that we strive to make sure our bus drivers are well trained. In that same vein, we want our students to be well rested for school and to be using scientifically backed uh research about how we start and end our school day. And so uh school start times falls into that category, uh just like those other things.
I was just referencing, I know that start time has been listed on more than one strategic vision presentation. So I was trying to get something specific out of that, but I understand. Also, um the change for late start. I'd like to bring that up as a topic of discussion, too. If we change the start time based on science, why are we having late start where we're disrupting their routine?
Want me to address that, Mr. Chair?
Uh yes, please.
Okay, so uh one of the to do items is what we do about late starts. Uh our what's our preferred uh solution is to have additional days of professional development for our staff that are separate from school days to avoid that disruption. So I agree with you there, Laura, that uh late starts don't seem to fit in that uh in that same category and I I take issue with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Stephanie, you have a question?
I was going to get to say you're still on mute. Um I was just going to ask, um because I I asked earlier about the start time. But one question I just thought of is have, has there been any feedback since we had the February meeting and the vote at the SAU? Has there been any feedback from teachers or staff that anything that we should be thought of, aware of, concerns brought up that we haven't like probably digested 100 times over about this?
Yeah, I uh so um there has not been anything new and significant. There have been some minor things that people have brought up that we've said, oh, that's a good, that's a, that was a very specific kind of fine points now that it's become more of a real thing. Uh there are still people that disagree clearly. This was not a uh consensus decision. Um but uh there's been nothing uh, nothing new that has not been considered thus far. That's not a very specific point.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, because I mean, you and I had that discussion. I've been struggling with this myself, but.
No, I I I know, unless I'm missing something. Uh so uh Mike or Beg, am I, have I forgotten something that's been, that's come up? I want to make sure I'm not forgetting something.
Substantial at the building level, just people coming in and having conversations about what it's going to look like. The late starts, Laura, that came up, you know, in combination with the daily schedule changes that we 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 proposed and put through. Um so uh just conversation about what it's going to look like, nothing that you haven't talked about.
Yeah, great, thank you.
All right, thank you both, Mike and Adam on that. Uh anybody else have any other questions or concerns regarding the proposed start times, starting and end in times, I should say? Now seeing none, um so let's go ahead and vote on this then. Um and this is, we're voting.
And this, we're voting to accept the proposed school start time as indicated in the superintendent's memo. That's in the consent agenda. Okay, so I'll take a roll call vote. Your. Your yes vote, your yes vote will vote for the start times and a no vote will vote against it. So Mr. Kaufman?
Kaufman, yes.
Miss Basie?
ACS.
Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
Miss Grund?
Grund, yes.
Miss Taylor?
Taylor, no.
Mr. Torres?
Lawrence, yes.
And Gronster, yes. So we passed the new start times, about six to one. Six in favor, one against, unopposed. So that concludes the school start time. So now we'll move over into public input number two. Again, this is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board. You can, this is, is not meant to be a dialogue, but more an opportunity for you. To express any concerns that you may have or just voice your opinion. If, please use the raise your hand feature and when you do, and when I'm, when I call on you, please state your name, the town you're from and your address. And I'll allow a few more moments. Okay, seeing none. I will end the second public input of two. And before we go into non-public, actually, I was also a bit remiss in asking if anybody had any committee updates that they'd like to. Give an update on. Anybody with any committees that they wanna talk about? Steve does? Okay, Steve, go ahead.
Real brief, PPC is gonna have a meeting next week. I assume it's a. The main agenda item will be the discussion around impacts of the start time.
Okay, thank you for that. Laura, do you have a committee update you'd like to provide?
No, I just wanted to mention that I've had difficulty following community council. Their links, I, I don't ever see an agenda listed. On their website for their meetings to meet the right to know requirements. And considering they're an extension or a committee of our board, it's my understanding. I was under the understanding that they had to follow right to know.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up. I am unsure of that and I would ask Delaney if she could look into that to make sure that they're following. I think Mr. Kaufman can answer that question frankly.
Yeah, I, I, I don't believe that they're a committee of the board. They're, they're constituted by the, by the constitution, but, and so it's a board policy. But given that it's whatever number of 30 odd members, I think, and only. One of them is a board member. It's not a board committee, but like, just like the faculty senate isn't, isn't. A public body. It's an internal function of the school, not subject to the rights and no law.
Thanks for that explanation, Steve. So it should be pretty plain, Delaney.
However, Laura is right. They should have minutes and agendas, even, even without being required by law.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I can talk to Maddie the clerk to make sure that the Zoom links are updated. I know there's been some trouble even within council of. Making sure the right Zoom links, everyone's clicking them. So I'll talk to her to make sure that that's up to date and that our agenda's up there as well.
Perfect, thank you so much.
And Tim, just to clarify, there are minutes, so, so perhaps we just need to make sure that those are, are made available. And Delaney, I can work with you on, on all of this as well.
Yeah, I, I thought that I was gonna say that there were minutes cuz I've seen, seen lots of them come across my email, but maybe not everybody gets them, so. Just to verify that the, the school board. Email addresses are correct. Okay, great, thank you, Laura. Okay, thanks for all of that. So I think at this point, we're ready to go into non-public. So I will take a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
Is it to the RSA that you have mentioned on the agenda, Adam? Yes, the RSA 91A colon three, sub paragraph two and which? A and C. And sub A and C, okay. So motion by John, seconded by Laura. We'll do a roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
ACS.
John?
Glover, yes.
Stephanie?
Grund, yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
George?
Lawrence, yes.
And Gronster, yes. Okay, thank you everybody for attending. Have a good evening and we are in non-public.